Okay, now, do we see her?
So where are you at, Greg?
I right now.
Due to tonight's first Columbia City Council Ward One Candidate Forum on Zoom. Thank you for joining us. I am Barbara Hoppe and I will be the moderator. Tonight, we have candidates in the only competitive race for Columbia City Council Ward One. And there are three candidates. Only two will be with us today, or at least at the beginning of the forum. Mark Anderson has had a family matter come up and he isn't able to join us right now. And perhaps he'll join us later, we'll see. So we're going to make the time limits a little more lenient and hopefully ask a few more questions. The election is now being held, as most of you hopefully know, on June 2. I wanted to say that the deadline to request an absentee ballot is 5:00 PM on May 20, which can be done for several reasons, including if you're concerned about voting in person because of health-related concerns connected to the COVID-19 issue. And if you do request an absentee ballot for that reason, you will not have to have your mail-in ballot notarized. And Brianna Lennon has sort of explained that in the press. So welcome again to our candidates, Pat Fowler and Greg Pearson. Columbia has seven members of the city council, six are representatives of wards, and one is the mayor. Each council member serves for three staggered terms. Each year, two ward seats are up for election, and every third year, the mayor is up for election. This year, council wards one and five are up for reelection. There is a competitive race in Ward One. In Ward Five, only Matt Pittsir, who has served for the last three years, is running. So he is not included in this forum, which is for the contested races. So today, we have candidates for Ward One, Pat Fowler and Greg Pearson. And we will allow two minutes for an opening statement for each candidate. And then I will ask five questions of the candidates and will have two minutes, up to two minutes, for them to respond. And we do have a chat feature on the Zoom. And so if people have additional questions that aren't covered and they want us to put them on the chat, if we have time, I'll come back and ask those questions. And then finally, we'll have a closing statement from the candidates, which is, will be for one minute also. And then we'll try to switch up the questions. So a different candidate is the first one to answer a question. So with that, Pat Fowler, you can make your opening statement. Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you for hosting us this evening. It's good to see everyone after eight weeks of near solitary confinement and to be in conversation this evening. The First Ward is a gem of proximity to city government, places of worship, education, jobs, transportation, groceries, healthcare, community gardens. What saddens me is that the combination of low wages and increasing housing costs have pushed the most vulnerable among us to the outer reaches of the city, far from those services. I've lived on North Sixth Street since July of 2009. Coming together with my neighbors and my neighborhood has been comforting, satisfying, and exhausting at the same time. Comforting because we watch out for each other and care for each other, satisfying because we have some of the most active neighborhood associations in our city, but exhausting because of the age of our infrastructure and the redevelopment pressures, including single-purpose housing for students or short-term rentals, which tend to be congregated in the center part of the city, means that we are always on alert for what may disrupt our homes, our lives, our neighbors, and our neighborhoods. I'm running for the First Ward seat because I want to take my 16 years of active preparation, the persistence that I have learned from working in concert with other citizens and petitioning City Hall, and continue proactive on policies and funding that benefit our First Ward neighbors and small businesses. Again, thanks for including me this evening.
Thank you, Pat. And now Greg, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Well, I just want to say thank you again to you all for having me here tonight. I'm really excited to be a part of this. And I'm especially excited, like Pat said, to be doing something, to be talking to people and to see some new faces. So I'm really glad that we could get this together. I want to take the opportunity to thank a few people before I really get into it. I want to thank Mayor Therese and the rest of the city council for their leadership in this challenging time. I think they've proven that Columbia is a resilient place, somewhere that we will be able to persevere through any challenge that we face. And I think they've done a wonderful job of leading us through that. And I'm really excited that we've begun the path back to reopening in Columbia. And I'm really looking forward to whatever our new normal will be. But hopefully, it will include a little bit more social interaction than we have right now. I also want to thank the leadership of the University of Missouri, where I attend. For all they've done in this time, adapting to the new challenges we've faced, I think they've done an excellent job of facilitating the transition into a new normal for us on campus. And for many of us, that included not being in Columbia anymore. And that's saddening because there aren't as many students and a lot of the lifelines of Columbia aren't there at the moment from the university. And I'm disappointed in that, but I really admire the work that our leadership has done to just make this transition as smooth as possible. And I also want to thank the county clerk for her leadership in this time, allowing absentee voting to be an easier process for anybody and just making this as easy a transition as possible. This is going to be an unprecedented election. We're never going to see anything like this, hopefully ever again. And we certainly haven't up until now. So I'm hoping that those transitions are going to be a little easier for us over time. And I'm excited that we've been able to do that so well so far. These leaders in our community have inspired me. And I'm hoping that they will motivate me to be a better leader myself as we move forward. I'm hoping that my leadership of students in this time and within our community will contribute to the progress on many of the meaningful issues that Pat already mentioned, as well as change their perspective on what students can bring to the table in this ward. I'm hoping that we'll be able to really shift how we look at things and be able to move forward in a different way.
Thank you. Okay, so the first question I will give to Pat, who I think is first on the ballot. And then the same question for Greg. And then the next question, we'll start with Greg first. So the first question is, what are your unique qualities that make you the best candidate to represent Ward One?
I listen, I'm learning to listen more. And the longer I'm involved in city politics and city issues, I realize how much I have to learn from other people that I've worked in collaboration with. So I think that listening is a unique characteristic that I have for listening to other people's ideas and recognizing that a city council person is there to represent not their own opinions, but the opinions and the needs of their ward. Next, I have 16 years' experience in Columbia, active on city issues. When I first, my first experience was in 2003, when flooding surrounded my neighborhood. And I realized at the time, I lived just over the city line, that everything that happened in the city affected me. And so I got involved. And now, 16 years later, I live downtown and I have been part of several coalitions where we've had very difficult issues come in front of our city government and our citizens. And together, we have either pushed back and said no or suggested changes that would work for us or supported them wholeheartedly. And I want to bring that experience forward. It's tricky to understand how city government works. It takes a long time to get all of those nuances into perspective and understand the importance of things like the capital improvement budget and the Finance and Audit Commission and their work, and Water and Light, and the importance of that work, of the work of that board. And I think I have a really good foundation for representing our ward with that awareness.
Thank you. Greg, do you want me to repeat the question or you've got it?
I think I've got it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think that's a great question and it's one that I'm really excited to tackle. I think obviously what I bring is a fresh perspective to city government and a little bit of a younger voice into this conversation. As a student, I think I'm the best candidate to speak on the perspective and the abilities that students can bring to the table. In my opinion, students are the greatest untapped resource, especially for the First Ward that we have. There are nearly 2,000 students registered to vote just in the dorms at Mizzou. And that doesn't include thousands of other students that live in the ward and that have the potential to really get involved. I think what the First Ward needs to bring some impactful change on issues like affordable housing, gun violence, food insecurity, public transit, climate, all of these things, we need more voices in the conversation. We need higher voter turnout. We need more people to be getting involved and making their voices heard. Some of our neighborhood leaders, including Pat, have done an incredible job of doing that for themselves over the past few years. But we need more people involved to really push the envelope on some of these things. Students are the opportunity that we have to do that. If we could figure out a way to motivate students to get involved, to really vote in larger numbers and push for change on these issues, we could really see some meaningful impacts. I think a big misconception that people have is that students' values and beliefs and the things they care about don't align with the residents of the First Ward and of Columbia. I think that's actually not true. The issues that are most important to students, the issues that are most important to me, are the things like affordable housing, infrastructure, gun violence, that are also the most important issues to the residents of Ward One. So I'm really excited that we have the opportunity to do that this year and motivate more students to get involved. And hopefully, that'll be a trend that continues for years to come because I believe the First Ward needs students and students need the First Ward in order to move forward in a positive direction. So I think that's my biggest, the biggest unique quality about me that I bring to the table in this conversation.
Thank you. Okay, question two, this will be for you, Greg Pearson, first. What improvements would you like to see made in Columbia and in the First Ward during your term if you are elected?
I think that's a great question. There's obviously tons and tons of things that we could be doing. And I think we've already talked about a number of them. Recently, I'll start here, though. I think recently, the city has done a really good job of being a leader nationally on climate issues. So I think the first priority for us is continuing that work and making sure that we're doing our part to address the climate change issues that are so important to our world today. Also, some of the more, some of the issues that are more frequently talked about in the First Ward and some of the things that we're in dire need of addressing are things like affordable housing. I believe that we have the resources to fund those things and to support the groups that are working on that. I think we just need to be more intentional about it, especially in the First Ward. Pat already highlighted a couple of those things. Also, infrastructure, like Pat said, again, is a huge, huge need for a lot of the First Ward. I'd like to see our community become more walkable, more accessible. But unfortunately, a lot of the infrastructure problems that we have make that impossible at the moment. We saw back in September, a month where we had six people die from gun violence in Columbia. And that, to me, was a big wake-up call and one of the reasons I got involved in the first place. So I'd like to see some meaningful change impacted on violence and crime in our communities and really see what we can do to reduce that, hopefully to zero at some point in the near future. I think some of, those are some of the biggest issues. But in every aspect of our process as city council and every aspect of our leadership in this city, we need to be prioritizing equity and bringing that to the table in every single decision that we make. So I'd like to see some of our processes, some of the processes of city leadership, start to include more transparency, be more open to the public, and really seek more engagement because I think that will lead to more equitable decisions in the future. So there's tons of things that we could talk about here, but those are just a few of the big ones.
Thank you. And Pat Fowler?
Yes. So I am, having read the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan several times, we had a forum on that back in, I think, the end of February. I'm really excited for a lot of the language in that plan that talks about equity and addressing vulnerable populations. Because in our most recent 10 years, let me focus on that, we haven't been able to look very deeply into equity. And we tend to, when we make changes, we usually make the vulnerable populations of Columbia even more vulnerable. So we have an opportunity here to do that. We also have the opportunity, and I hear people nationally, like all of you, I'm watching the news every day. I'm watching for information about the coronavirus, what the incidence is, all the ways we can mitigate that so we can safely come back to a time where we can gather together and leave our homes and go back to some level of economic activity. But I see over and over again, people saying, well, we need to come back differently this time. Because as the mayor stated early on, we have exposed every inequity in our community by just watching how our actions or failure to act around the coronavirus have exposed, the lack of healthcare equally across our community, the health disparities that many of our residents are facing. Some residents are more vulnerable than others to the effect of the virus, the fact that African-Americans are dying at a greater rate in Missouri and across the nation from coronavirus because they also have underlying chronic healthcare concerns. So I think that as we move forward, it has to be a conversation that includes all the members of the community, not just the usual folks that have time to come to city council and talk about it. So I'm interested in pursuing equity and looking specifically at our vulnerable populations, economically vulnerable, health vulnerable, mental health vulnerable populations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this next question goes to Pat Fowler first. And you touched on it a little bit, but we'll focus on it. In the present COVID-19 crisis that impacts our medical care and economy, both nationally and locally, what do you see as your role in addressing this locally if you are elected?
So some of the small business people that I've talked to that have businesses in the First Ward have expressed concern that the benefits of some of the programs that have come out from the federal government, like the Paycheck Protection Act, were not equally available to them. Now, that was a program that went through our local banks. There was not a lot of guidance on it. I read as much guidance as they put out on that when it became available. I talked to some people who had applied for it. And so the guidance wasn't there and people were left behind, either because the banks didn't have time to process their application or they weren't prioritized because perhaps their business was too small in comparison with other businesses. So to the extent that the city funds programs that involve our community banks, we have the ability to leverage that relationship that we already have with them to ask some very important questions. And let's have an after-action assessment of how the programs and the dollars that came to our community through the feds, through the state, however it reached us, were those implemented equitably and fairly and evenly so that everyone, regardless of who they are and where they lived and how large their business was and what they did for a living, had an equal opportunity to benefit from that? Because that's really the lifeline that's holding a lot of our citizens, their homes together, their families together right now. So that would be my top priority. I would like to look at carefully the equitable issues that surrounded the distribution of those funds. I don't know where I am on my time. After that, I think that I listened to the Department of Health conversations, including those that talk about health disparities and the social determinants of health. And we have a lot of work to do on that. Our citizens should not, when faced with the requirement that you need your doctor's permission to go through one of the testing sites to be tested for the disease, you have to start with the obstacle that you don't have a doctor. You don't have a regular physician to call. And I know we have the Family Health Center, but I think we have an opportunity here to look at that more carefully as well.
Thank you. And Greg Pearson?
Can I get you to repeat the question real quick, just to make sure that I got exactly what you're asking?
In the present COVID-19 crisis that impacts our medical care and economy, both nationally and locally, what do you see as your role in addressing this locally if you are elected?
Absolutely. So the mayor and our city leadership has talked frequently about what our new normal will be. If elected, I think it's our responsibility to determine what that's going to look like and then implement that effectively, safely, and make sure that we're leading by example when we talk about what that might be. I think a lot of it will be a different operating system for businesses, obviously a change to how our healthcare system works. I think just our social interactions and the way we go about education and work and all that kind of thing, it's going to be different. So determining what that looks like and then implementing it effectively is going to be the top priority for all of our city leaders. In the First Ward specifically, I think we face a lot of those equity issues that we've talked about quite a bit already. And our objective, as soon as this is over or even while it's still going on, is how can we fix some of those things? How can we actually make some meaningful progress on those things? So when we talk about how our healthcare system works, how are we prepared to take these issues on? Are we being accessible to all people in a time of crisis? And even in a time where things are a little bit easier, are we making sure that our systems work for everyone in the community? I think that's going to be our biggest priority in terms of healthcare. I think as we move on to things like education and businesses and like Pat was saying, the distribution of federal services, I think those are the kinds of things that we need to be taking a closer look at, reexamining, and trying to figure out exactly how we can move forward in a new world under a new normal. So I think it's going to be our role to make sure that's done safely and equitably, as we've mentioned, and then lead by example and show that that's possible. What our leaders have shown us already is that when we take the right steps, when we're cautious but prepared, we come out on top, we prevail. And I think that's going to be the biggest objective for us over the next few months as well.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, do you have any specific proposals that you would like to pursue to ensure that healthcare, as well as other basic needs, are available to all people in Ward One?
I would like us to undertake a review of the federal dollars that come through city government. And again, I'm borrowing this phrase, "after-action assessment" is not my phrase. I heard someone in, at the CDC or one of the federal organizations that talk about how they do that after every significant event. So I would like us to use that process, whatever that looks like. And of course, I have some ideas on what that might look like, whether we do that in person or over Zoom or one of those other tools. Let's look at the money that flows into the city from various sources that we typically use for vulnerable populations, whether they're in the First Ward or in any ward, where we address healthcare issues or mental healthcare issues. And we have a significant mental health, we have a significant population that is vulnerable in the area of mental health. And that's been a struggle for the city to handle compassionately during this particular pandemic. And so let's look at all of those things. And are we spending our money, much like the performance audit asks? Are we spending our money efficiently, equitably, economically? Are we looking to make sure we're getting what we think we're getting rather than getting what we say we're getting, but not really verifying that? So we have an opportunity. Community development block grants is how a lot of federal money comes to the city. And there was extra CDBG funding for COVID. And that's come through and it's been handled expeditiously by city staff, including Randy Cole and a small group of people that he's worked with. But that program has been around since the 70s. And so what is its intended use? And are we getting the highest and best use out of those dollars that come in every year? And I think it's time for us to revisit that in a meaningful way in light of the vulnerabilities that have been exposed during the pandemic.
Thank you. And Greg, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I've got it. Thank you. Yeah, I think one of the biggest things for us is making sure that as we move forward, we're prepared. Because what we saw in this pandemic was that many people were not, especially some of our healthcare systems. And that's not their fault. We just didn't give them the adequate resources to do so. So I think in the future, we're going to need to make sure that our healthcare providers are prepared to take on such an influx of people and are making the kind of resources that are necessary to equitable treatment available to everybody. So increasing our personal protective equipment and things like that that are necessary to be able to treat everybody in a situation like this. But then, on the other side, how do we help people recover and how do we take care of the economy? I think the biggest thing is making sure that our resources are distributed equitably and just making sure that we're able to address the needs of all of the different groups equally and equitably, like I said. So I think it's two different facets of it. The being prepared in the beginning and then on the back end, making sure that we can get everybody back on their feet, that the resources we're able to provide go to the right places and are adequately prepared to do so. So that's kind of the two different things that I think we need to look at.
Thank you. And that's a good segue to the next question, which is, with a sales tax-based economy that the city has, what should we do to stabilize city income since its sales tax has steadily been going down? And now with COVID-19, it's going down even further. And that would be for you first, Greg.
Yeah, so I think obviously, this was a concern for us months ago and it's still a concern now and definitely in these times even more so. I think some of the things that we need to do is ensure that the money we do have is used in the right way. So Pat kind of touched on the audit of the city and kind of where our funding is coming from and where it can go. We need to make sure that all that money is being used effectively in the first place because if we're bringing in revenue and it's being wasted or it's being put into the wrong areas, that doesn't help us out very much. I think we need to do, kind of in addition to that, a greater review of how we use our money in the first place and where it's going and making sure that it's being used equitably. So those are kind of the things that we need to do to ensure that the money we do have is used efficiently. I think we need to start examining also some new ways of increasing revenue. So whether that be increasing tax revenue in different ways, how are we able to regulate an online economy? And kind of how can we make that benefit the city as well? Because in-person sales taxes is obviously going to go down pretty significantly. It already has and it's going to keep going down. I think another thing is the students. And how can we get such a huge population of people that are willing to engage with the community? How can we make sure that the money they're spending, the things they're doing, are going back into the city and making sure that we're using that money effectively? So I think right now, the students are basically able to sustain themselves on their various campuses and don't really need necessarily to engage with the city as much as would be preferred. I think if we can come up with a way to get students more engaged in the community, spending more money downtown and really caring more about what happens with it, then we're going to be able to kind of see an increase in revenue that way as well, hopefully.
Thank you. And Pat Fowler?
Yes. So when I first arrived in Columbia, we had a lot more wooded areas immediately surrounding downtown. And in that time, retail has expanded broadly. And there's been conversations over those years about the increased dependence that the city has on sales tax. We know that the city has lobbied the state to implement all the necessary things so that we can have an online sales tax that benefits the city. I believe they're collecting some sum of money right now, but we don't get our little sliver of it, and it is a sliver. You know, when you look at our 7-plus percent sales tax, what the city actually earns off of that is not the 7%. It's like 2% or 2.5%. It's a small amount of the sales tax, just like we get a very small amount of the property tax as well because most of that funds our schools. So first, there's the online sales tax. And there's, I've heard opposition, the last time we put a use tax on the ballot a couple of years ago. And I heard opposition from people saying, no, 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 they wouldn't buy online. It would make such a difference. And why are we taxing?
And why are we taxing them an additional sum of money? Well, we're not, because we're leveling the playing field between bricks and mortar retail and online retail. It's not a new tax. It's just the same tax applied more equitably. We do have a heavy reliance on sales tax for general revenue. And because of that, I think we need to rethink how we fund our city services. There has been a revenue task force proposed in conversation between the Finance and Audit Commission and the Council. And I think it's time to act on that and put that in place and let people come forward to that board and commission with good ideas.
Thank you. Next question would go first to Pat. I was reading a message on my screen. The question is, "Do you believe race relations have improved in the past year? And what can we do to improve it further? Or improve it where it should be?"
So I've seen, over the 20 years I've been here, Columbia has made progress only to stand still, sometimes to take a step backwards and then make progress again. We've had, over those years, various programs across recent class lines to give us an opportunity to dialogue about why we do have a racial divide in Columbia. It's still alive and well as far as a racial divide. We have not solved the problem of race in our community. The recent death of Mr. Kitchen, who was a security personnel for a downtown nightclub, and the sequence of events that occurred that evening have had all of us, prior to COVID, revisiting the issue of race in how our police protect us and how our citizens are perceived. We have a lot of work to do around that, including around the vulnerabilities of people of color who are dying at greater rates because of COVID, because of underlying health conditions and/or less access to medical care than the dominant culture. So I think we have an opportunity here. And as messy and uncomfortable as that conversation will be, we need to have it with a whole new level of focus and genuineness and commitment to changing the outcome for people of color in Columbia.
Thank you. And Greg Pearson.
I think that whatever progress we've made is not enough. I think that we need to keep pushing this issue to improve it further. So Columbia still faces a lot of issues around structural inequality and the kinds of things that disproportionately impact our communities of color. I saw a question in the question and answer section about community policing and what that might look like for Columbia. And I believe that that's going to be something that's really important for us to examine moving forward, as well as something to make sure that we get right. It's not something that we, as white people, are going to be able to decide on our own what that looks like and decide what's best for the community based on our own beliefs about it. We're going to need more voices in the conversation. We're going to need more people giving their input. And we're going to need more participation, more engagement, in order to really push the envelope and move the needle on any of these things. So I think we have a long ways to go, and I think we have the potential to solve a lot of these problems and fix some of the things that have historically plagued our race relations in Columbia. But I believe we're going to need more voices to do it. So if elected, I would want to be very intentional about going out and getting those voices, hearing from those constituents that can bring a new perspective, a different idea to the table about how we can do this effectively. So going forward, I'd like to see that be what our leadership looks like. And I'm hopeful that that's going to be exactly how we conduct ourselves over the next few years at least. And hopefully, we'll be able to really improve those relations even further going forward. So I'm hopeful about the future, but I recognize that we've got a long ways to go.
Thank you. And since we have one less participant than we planned on, I'd like to ask another question. And then we do have a question from one of our viewers that I'll follow up and ask. And this sort of segues from what you mentioned, Greg. If you are elected as First Ward City Council member, how specifically will you communicate with the people in Ward 1 and the city to get their input and communicate with them?
I think that I'm hopeful that that communication will be done individually and in person as much as possible. So I'd like to be as accessible as possible to my constituents and be able to make as many relationships as possible, because I believe that's how progress is made, by building those relationships and working together as a group. What I've experienced so far in Columbia is that we have a lot of really engaged, really passionate people that believe that they can contribute to the things that we're trying to do in some way or another. And that's exactly what I'm going to look for and something that I'm going to need as I look to lead this community going forward. So I'd like to be as accessible as possible to my constituents, holding office hours and going out and trying to seek their input as much as possible. I think that can't be something that we do passively, that we just wait for those people to come to us. I know that those people are out there, and I want to go find them and talk to them. So as much as possible, I'm going to try and do individualized, personal communication. I believe also we're always going to have to be examining how we communicate to broader groups and how we use different platforms to do that. I think we have some different ways of communicating now than we did even five years ago, and that's going to be important for us to utilize. And like I said, just bringing new voices into the conversation as well. So I'd want to communicate with the students better to bring their voice into the conversation and really have them help us make progress on these issues. And I just believe that it's going to be really important to be active in our communication, going out and seeking that input and that involvement, rather than sitting back and hoping that it comes to us.
Thank you. And Pat Fowler.
One of the things that's so wonderful about the First Ward is that they genuinely want and demand time with their councilperson. We have a couple councilpeople now that have office hours, and I've been to them many times, and they're well-attended. And people come in and they sit down and they wait their turn to talk about an issue, and sometimes they're there about the same issue and a dialogue opens up. But in the First Ward in particular, we have a lot of folks that want to regularly communicate with their First Ward representatives. So it's about office hours at a predictable time and place. It's about publishing what your schedule is and where you're going to be if you're attending city functions. One of the ways that I've been successful in the past in finding not only city-elected officials, but even our state reps, is you get to know their schedule and you know where you can find them. I used to be able to find our state rep, Mary Still, because I knew where she was at noon on Fridays. And if I needed to talk to her, I just made sure I was there. So by being predictable where the citizens can find us, I remember Barbara, you used to walk your dog with constituents, which was a delightful way to get to spend time with your councilperson. And so there's ways that make you accessible and approachable. And I think that that's really important. I'm a coffee shop kind of person. Probably one of the most difficult challenges I've had during this shutdown is that I miss the conversations that happen, both planned and spontaneous, over coffee in one of our downtown coffee shops. But there's any number of ways to reach out. This idea of an after-action assessment, again, not my idea, I borrowed it from someone else. I think there's an opportunity to have after-action assessments with First Ward constituents on a regular basis, including to the point of, instead of limiting people to three minutes to tell us what's wrong with an ordinance, which is really practically all a citizen gets to do at a public meeting, we could have more broad-based meetings where people could come in with their good ideas that they've spent time on and that they could ask for a certain amount of time to present that, not only to councilmembers that want to attend, but also to their fellow citizens, and build coalitions among them for ideas to come forward that improves the lives of First Ward residents and small businesses.
Thank you. It looks like we have a question that I'll ask from someone who's watching. And I haven't had a chance to read it beforehand, but it says, let's see. "You mentioned low wages, the need for affordable housing, and the pressure of development in your opening speech." I guess, Pat. "You also signed the First Ward Neighborhood Pledge that articulates neighbors' desires to strengthen affordable housing, infrastructure, and address structural inequality in the First Ward. Why did you take money from Mr. Parmley, who consistently fights for taxpayer handouts while we struggle to afford reappearing infrastructure in the First Ward?" So...
Yes. Mr. Parmley, he called me and wanted to donate $200 to my campaign. He said he had already donated to another candidate, Mark Anderson, and he wanted to be balanced about that. And he also wanted... I've known Dave Parmley for a while. I've talked to him. I disagreed with him strenuously about the last TIF. I remember standing out in front of City Hall during that hearing. He was there with his lawyer, Mr. Hollis, and I told him, "I'm sorry, I don't agree with you. I don't think this is the right thing for the city." And so I don't view accepting campaign contributions equally with other members. Again, he called me. I didn't recruit from him. He called me about it and said that he had donated to Mark Anderson, and he also wanted to donate to me. And I'm looking forward to continuing to have a conversation with Dave Parmley about things that the city has the ability to influence because of the relationship he has with the city, where he asks for a TIF and he has certain relationships and right requirements as a result of that. That's our conversation in with a private business person. Otherwise, we don't have as much leverage. Now, where wages are concerned, we do have leverage with the amount of money that the city pays its employees. And for several years, I articulated on behalf of a raise for our sanitation workers, the guys on the trucks, because the city for a long time was talking about replacing our trash trucks with hydraulic trucks and roll carts, because the cost of workers' comp was so high and that it was such a dangerous job. So I went to city council and stood at the podium and said, "Well, if it's such a dangerous job, why aren't they paid commensurate with the amount of danger? You say it's as dangerous as being a firefighter. Why aren't they paid as well as a firefighter?" So they have an opportunity to rest their bodies and take advantage of their health insurance benefits that the city offers them. And so that we have an opportunity for them to be less injured as being part of the Public Works and the Solid Waste Department. I see, we have successfully moved their wages up a bit to a floor of $15 an hour. That's not high enough. And so where the city is the employer, we have an opportunity to, and an obligation, to advocate on behalf of wages that help our employees sustain their families. Now, that can also have and put pressure on the rest of the employment market. If the city is suddenly paying a living wage to its employees, then other people who are not paying living wages to their employees would have to look at that and decide whether or not that's going to pull up the wages they pay as well.
Thank you. And Greg, would you like to add anything? Although that was directed at Pat, if you want to talk about something related.
I'm not sure I have a whole lot to contribute to that question. It obviously was intended for Ms. Fowler. So I'd like to echo some of those things about wages especially and how we can make some improvements on that in our community. I think that's something that's really important in solving a lot of those equity issues that we've talked about pretty extensively so far. So just want to echo some of that, obviously, and make sure that we're continuing to examine that as we move forward. But otherwise, I don't think I have that much.
And I do have a question that is directed specifically at you, Greg, so I'll go ahead and read that. It says, "Greg, as an MU student living in the dorms, has the COVID-19 crisis forced you to move out of Columbia to your native St. Louis? And when will you be able to return?"
Yeah, like many other students, including, you know, some of the people that I think are on the call with us tonight, and I'm not sure, I saw that Will Skipworth asked this. So Will, I hope you're doing okay wherever you are. But like a lot of students, it has, it's forced me to leave Columbia. None of us were very happy about it, and I can certainly include myself in that conversation, just because we miss it pretty badly and we want to get back as soon as we can. We're excited about the potential of doing that very soon. But I think in this situation, we have to respect the decisions of our leaders. And in this case, like I've said, I applaud a lot of the decisions that were made by the university leadership, as well as just some of the city leadership, and doing what was best for the community. So I think that that was absolutely the right thing to do, was to get students back to their homes and in a little bit more of a safer situation than living so close together in the dorms. I think another thing is just that we want to continue to make the right and the most safe decisions as we move forward. I am in St. Louis, where we're still in a sheltered place order for a little while. So hopefully, that will be lifted soon. But obviously, it's a little bit of a different situation for me than it is for a lot of you that are still in Columbia. And I'm just hopeful that we can get back to that new normal as soon as possible. So hopefully, I'll be able to be back there very soon.
Thank you. And I'll ask one more location-related question that came in, directed at Pat. And then we'll move to closing arguments. And this one said, "Candidate Fowler, how will you be accessible to constituents when you work full-time and maintain a separate residence in KC?"
So I have a job outside the city, yes. After working in Columbia since, I think I took that job in December of 2014, so I've been doing that for five years. I drive back and forth. I have 70,000 miles on a pickup truck I've only owned for two years, because I go back and forth a lot. And I attend meetings regardless of whether or not I had to work earlier in the day. I have the support of my employer. But the reason I had to seek employment outside of Columbia, because after being here for 15 years, the best I could do was $12 an hour with no benefits. The employment market in Columbia, and I assume in other university cities, although I don't know, because I've lived in other university cities but not been so impacted by the lower wages in Columbia. But there was, I am not by any means an exception. I know lots of people who perhaps they have more than one income in their household that helps them navigate the fact that they are paid a wage less than their skills and education would otherwise indicate. As far as staying in Kansas City, I slept in the office for a year and a half when I took that job. And after a while, I just got tired of climbing up off the floor, because I'd take the cushions off the furniture and I'd sleep on the office floor on those nights that I stayed out there. So now I sleep in a basement that I rent nearby. I rent a basement room. And that just saves a little wear and tear on me physically on days that I'm not coming back to Columbia. I have been doing this for five years. I am the chair of a city commission. The only thing that's interrupted my ability to attend commission hearings have been these forums for the city council. They tended to fall on Tuesdays, the same night as the commission hearings. And I have been, prior to that, I've been on other boards and commissions that I round-tripped for. So I don't think it's going to make a difference in how often I'm able to attend meetings. I appreciate the opportunity to answer that question, though, because my decision to take a job outside of Columbia was the result of the the difficulty that people have in earning enough money to pay their bills and have health insurance. And I'd like the community to talk more about that, and I have the experience to bring to that conversation.
Thank you. So now we'll move to closing statements. And since Pat started the opening statements, Greg, you get to start your closing statement, and then we'll follow with Pat. And there's two minutes, roughly two minutes, for the closing statement.
Absolutely. And I'm seeing another question directed at me coming in here as well, which I'll just kind of tie into my answer here, because it fits perfectly with what I wanted to say. I see myself as having an opportunity to have as great an impact as possible on Columbia in whatever time I spend here. I think a lot of people, whether they be residents of Columbia, whether they be students, see this as a short-term... see this as a short-term, I'm here for a few years and I'm moving on, or they're here for a few years and they're moving on, so why should we have them be involved in this conversation or why should I care? I think, I see that as an opportunity. We have thousands of students living in the First Ward that have the opportunity to vote because they live here, just like I do, or because they live in the First Ward and have that opportunity to get engaged. And those students could be the difference between us achieving the things that we need to achieve in the First Ward and not being able to impact any progress because we just can't get the engagement from our residents. So that is an opportunity for the First Ward to see some meaningful change and some meaningful impacts as a result of engaging with the students. I believe that it's equally important for the students to get engaged themselves because the impact that we have on our community is going to be reciprocated and the impact that we have, or the impact that Columbia has on us and on our experiences, immeasurable as I'm sure many of my fellow students, some of whom are with us here tonight, can attest to. So I think that it's a great opportunity for students and the community to come together in this way to really achieve some progress on the issues of equity, the issues of affordable housing, the issues of structural inequality that we've talked so much about. I think without the students, we're not going to be able to achieve as much change. And I think it's all right to be resistant to kind of having the students be as engaged as possible in this process, but they're necessary for us to move forward in the ways that we want to move forward and I'm excited to be a part of that. Thank you.
Yeah. And Pat Fowler, your closing statement.
I so appreciate Greg's involvement in this race because he articulates the view of the students and reminds us that part of the economic engine of Columbia are the students who come here and live here and spend their money here and eat in our down restaurants and our shops, buy their clothes in our shops and participate in recreation here. And that's a very important part of our economy. And if we didn't think so before, we certainly do now with the slowdown in business activity because of COVID and the fact that our students had to leave. But the First Ward, again, is a gem. We have the largest inventory of affordable housing in our ward, yet we don't have the policies to protect the housing we have. Yes, that housing needs repair, it needs upgrades, we want it to be resilient in the face of climate change, we want it to be energy efficient so it's affordable for our citizens, and we can do more along those lines. There's an active construction industry here. Well, they can turn their attention to restoring the housing we already have. We don't have to demolish it and take it to the landfill only to incur the negative climate effects of doing that. At the same time, that rebuilding that would then displace the people who lived in that neighborhood because that housing, the new housing would be far more expensive than the housing we have. So I'd like us to take the gems that we have, the strengths that we have, and our ability and willingness to talk about the difficult stuff, the inequity in our community and the vulnerable populations that need our attention and all the vulnerabilities that have come forward as a result of the pandemic, and move forward and come back with a different way of living together as Colombians. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to thank you very much, both Greg Pearson and Pat Fowler, for attending our first Zoom forum in these difficult times. And I'm sorry that Mark Anderson was not able to make it. This forum is recorded and will be available on YouTube and also at the League Facebook site, as well as the League website, which is L W B C B C dot com in a couple days. And I also want to thank Sharon Schneegberger for arranging the Zoom setup and being our technical expert. And I also want to thank Carol Schreiber for helping format the structure of this forum. And I wanted to let everyone know that tomorrow, we will have another Zoom candidate forum for the Columbia Public Schools. And we will have four candidates, it will start at 7 o'clock again. And we will also have Dr. Peter Steepelman, who will talk about the bond issue that is also on the ballot. So I want to remind everyone that June 2 is the voting day for City Council and for the school board and for the bond issue. And you have until 5:00 PM, May 20, to request an absentee ballot if you want to vote absentee. And thank you all for attending and for running. And we look forward to you serving the community, whether you win or lose, in the future. We're all here to help Columbia and our fellow people, citizens, residents. Thank you.
Thank you.